Call the order, the common council for the city of Mesquite for 7:14 at 6:01 PM. Roll call.
Alder Person's Madden.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Capusta.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
And Wolf.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Statement of public notice.
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Public comments.
I don't know if these people want to speak again or if they just...
I'm not sure. So you, the two of you that filled out your forms, do you want to speak again and pretty much probably say the same thing? Or was, are you guys good? Is there anything you want to add? I mean, you can do that.
I think that having 500 people in our neighborhood, it isn't...
If you're gonna, if you're gonna talk, I need you to come up to the microphone for the record, so.
Lynn Bruskowitz, Boxhorn Drive. I think having 500 people for the music, which is always loud, because he's had other bands in the past couple of years, and it's always loud. I can hear it at my house a quarter mile away. And that many people with that many cars, that would be, say, if you have two people per car, that's 250 cars. I don't know which two yards he's talking about, but I don't see them, parking would still be a problem. And getting in and out of our road, when somebody's parked, like part on the grass, part in the ditch, it's still hard to maneuver through the road. And I just don't see this being a good thing for our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Anything you want to amend to yours?
Doug Friedrich, South 90, West 139, 50, Boxhorn Drive. This is how loud the patio music is. That's on his patio. I'm on my patio. This is on the table. Way more than 60 feet from my house. You guys have given them plenty of opportunities as far as dance hall or dance permits outside. Have this stuff inside. It's loud enough inside. Put them inside. They're all winter.
Thank you. All right, moving on, communications from the mayor's office. Month. No. But, you know, if I will circle around, you'll be able to go through. They were originally planning on doing this in August and having it done by September. I'm sure the school district is ecstatic with this, but we'll work around it. So, just a heads up, there is, I guess there's, they have some information on their website, and we have a link on ours to it. They just don't have that date down yet. But, that's all I have for communications. Do you want to read the notice of public hearing?
To consider the petition of John Whalen of Cornerstone Development to rezon property located on Loomis Road, State Highway 36, known as tax key numbers 2258.074, 2258.996.001, and 2259.970, and part of tax key numbers 2261.978.003, and 2264.999, from B4, Highway Business District, to RM1, Multiple Family Residence District, and PD 38, Stone Ridge Plan Development District, to PD Plan Development District, based on the RM2 Multiple Family Residence District, for the purpose of allowing a development of two-family and four-family homes. The 2020 comprehensive plan also was proposed to be amended from commercial use to high-density residential use to medium-density residential use.
Thank you. So, as was mentioned, it's a rezoning. The current property has three different zoning classifications. In this, in the past, this property came forward with some really rough conceptual drawings that laid out the current zoning and the current land use maps as they sit today. On those plans, you'll see that the part fronting Loomis Road was a commercial zoning before. The part that was kind of in the back of the property was an RM1, which is our most dense multifamily district. And then there's a small section in the very north part of this, which was actually an old outlaw from the Stonebridge subdivision. It was always known that this land was landlocked, and it was adjacent to this land that's now in question. So, we always thought that whatever happened on this property would happen on that small section of outlawed in Stonebridge, which is exactly what the proposal today is showing. So, it definitely is kind of what the city thought would happen out there in some form or some land use. So, the request is to rezone the property from those three districts to the Plan Development District. And the Plan Development would all be based on the RM2 zoning. The RM2 is less dense than the RM1 that exists on part of the property today. It's about a 43.37 acre site. They're proposing 80 ranch-style condo units. There'll either be 14 two-family buildings and 13 four-family buildings, or double duplexes, as they call them. There will be a clubhouse with amenities on the site as well. The development will include internal private roads that will stem off of an entrance drive, which, the driveway that currently leads to the golf course. A good portion of that is going to be publicly dedicated as a public road and improved to public road standards. And then the private roads will stem off of that development. As far as the density for this development goes, you know, it's a total of 27 buildings, and it breaks down to about 1.84 units per acre, or one unit for every 23,631 square feet of land. This density falls well within the medium-density residential land use category, which allows up to 2.99 units per acre. And they are requesting to go to that medium-density land use as part of this request also. The RM2 zoning allows 10,000 square feet of land per dwelling unit, and their proposal also fits within that allowance. The applicant is not asking for any type of density bonus as part of this request. Other things that commonly come up as part of these types of requests are open space and floor area ratio. Both of those requirements are more than significantly meant without any kind of waivers being requested in this development. And like I said, as I noted, the comprehensive plan, bless you, is being changed from commercial and high-density residential, at least as part of the proposal, and it's proposing going to a medium-density residential land use. The email I just passed out a minute ago was the only comment I received ahead of this meeting, and it was from Bill and Carol Evers, and they asked that I read this. "Thanks for allowing me to discuss this new development along Highway 36 near Mesquite Lake Golf Course. We live in the Stonebridge subdivision along the South Retention Pond. Our concern is how close the buildings will be to our home and what landscaping will be done between our subdivisions. You indicated," and when he refers to you, he meant me, "indicated that the tree line near the wetlands will be removed. We are hoping that the developer will plant some trees to replace the tree line. Also, some type of berm along the northern property edge to our property is requested. Thank you for agreeing to relay our concerns. Thank you, Bill and Carol Evers." So, that was the only public comment that I received ahead of time.
Does anyone else want to make a comment on this, discuss? Should we have the developer come up first, or what do you typically? Would the developer like to come up and say a few words?
Well, I just didn't want to assume in familiarity what we have done in other spots. And I thought it would be beneficial, maybe I'm bringing it here, to talk to this client for the neighborhood and how it lays out, so they have a understanding of what this entails. I tend to move a lot, do you hear, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, but you might want to take the microphone out if you're walking around.
Okay, okay.
So, first of all, thank you for coming tonight for this meeting. I appreciate it very much. I'm John Whalen with Cornerstone Development, and this is Alan Peters with Truvine Development. Alan acts as a consultant. He's got engineering background and a ton of civil work throughout the metro Milwaukee area. So, he has teamed up with us to assist and do the things that are necessary to bring a neighborhood that'll work to your community. So, we, we built the Glenette Pelman Farm, which I think you're familiar with perhaps, along Woods Road, kind of right between Racine and Durham. And that's gone really well. We've been very pleased to work here. And then we came to learn that this parcel of land may be available to do such down on the south side of the city. And what we're excited about in laying this out, yes, we will have potentially 80 homes here, or units, with a bigger clubhouse than Pelman. And we also would love to put a pickleball court in, maybe a couple bowtie courts, depending on the fit and how that all works here at the entrance. So, you'd come in off of Loomis and turn in, and as was mentioned by Adam, thanks, Adam, the road, this will turn into a public road, and that'll get built to the standards and repaired. But the tree line will stay. We love that tree line and that entry. You'd then turn right and come into the neighborhood here. And we would have that clubhouse and the amenities right here. Can you see all right, should I?
They have a copy of it in their thing also.
Okay, all right. Well, I can, and I can bring it around as if there are further questions or needs. We, we then have what we think is just an incredible opportunity, because if you, if you picture Pelman Farm, that was about 2.99 units, if you will, or homes, we say, to the acre. In this case, it'd be much less. So, you should picture that the homes would be further apart ultimately. And a lot of green space, and you can see, we'll take advantage of the wetland areas to create ponds with fountains and just a real beautiful set of amenities from essentially any home you live in here. We also, it was gracious, Eileen, Alder Woman, got us together with a couple of the homeowner association presidents that are adjacent to this neighborhood, for Stonebridge and for Champions. And they gave us some great time and some, some really good input as to what would be necessary. One of the keys was, we met with the Department of Transportation for Wisconsin, the DOT, and they really were not very favorable about potential emergency access here. So, we met and discussed the ability to have just a breakaway gate here for emergency access in the event that this was blocked at this entrance. And they were amenable to that. They did ask for a few things, which actually upon further reflection made great sense. They would like to see a pedestrian path that would work from the current one, that's along Loomis, to the north and up to their neighborhood, with a stop along the way for a pocket park right here. We thought that was a great idea. So, that's also incorporated into the plan. So, the idea here would be similar to Pelman, where we would be attracting folks from the area and, and keep them in Mesquite. So, the whole idea and what we try to do is provide low-maintenance living and a real neighborhood lifestyle center. So, we believe we'll attract folks, you know, from this area that want to stay in this area. And generally, it's empty nesters. Generally, it's those that want low-maintenance lifestyle. We'll probably average one and a half to two homeowners per home. We generally average around 30% of our buyers being single again. And we average around 1.25 cars. If there are school-aged children in here, it would likely make up maybe 1% of the homes. Maybe one home or two homes would have school-aged children living in here. And sometimes that can be one of the situations where it's potentially a divorce situation, widow, widower. But generally, the homes, it's two bedrooms plus den and sunroom accommodate folks that are already empty nesters. The homes, the differences between Pelman Farm and here, I already mentioned, they'll be more spread out, much less density, a bigger clubhouse, and some other amenities that we can fit here. The homes will be really similar. We think we've designed, and Alan, maybe you can, we have some virtual images here. We took the roofline and tweaked it just a bit. We think what it does is it highlights the windows more. Still the same, same, same stone coverage, still hardy plank siding, the cementitious board siding. And we took the dormers off because we thought that detracted from all the windows and the beauty and the light as well for the homes. But otherwise, you're still seeing the architecture that we, we enjoy, where many times it's a double duplex, as Adam mentioned. And so, when you look at the, this map, so for example, I think one of the letters came in from somebody here. When they look at our neighborhood, they're not going to look at a garage door. If you really look at the map, they're looking at exactly what Alan's holding up. And the garages are tucked around to the side. And I think that's been a big reason why these have proven to be pretty popular, because, you know, it, it, it's a, it's a timeless look. Tried to do what we would call kind of a European country look, but, but keep them bright and airy and not so forefronting of the garage doors. In terms of valuation and the impact on the city in that regard, you know, we want to start these in the high 300s. Like that Pelman, some people will have us, you know, build out the lower level for a lot of additional space. There'll be same, same footprints, so 1,600 to 1,900 plus, almost 2,000 square feet. But we finished, in one home, we finished 1,500 of the square feet down in the lower level and really dressed it out. That's a blank slate. We can put egress windows. Some of these will have exposures. We'll see how the grading works. Some lookouts, potentially a few walkouts. But that'll be determined as we work further with Scott and his team. So, the, back to the valuation, so, you know, if we were to, to average what I think we will, times the, plus or minus 80 homes here, it would probably be around a $35 million real estate valuation in total in the end. So, it generally would have, as it has for other municipalities, and I think Pelman Farm's doing a nice impact on the city coffers. I'd love to open up the questions, comments. I've tried to cover things.
We just get to listen.
Oh, okay. All right. That's right. Okay. Yes.
Alan Peters. The public comment just had a question regarding how close. So, we did take a measurement, the closest building to the rear building in Stonebridge, the closest one is 400 feet. Obviously, these buildings have four-sided architecture, so it's like you're kind of looking at the front portion of it. As far as a berm, we would have to just look to see from a wetland perspective, because we can't grade within the wetland. But I think, we'll work with Adam afterwards. We're happy to move landscaping around and, and adjust however we can. So, I just wanted to address the comment that was raised.
All right. Anything else you want to add?
Just again, thank you for your time, and I will look forward to working with the city to see if we can put this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to be heard on this?
Just name and address?
Yep.
Steven Van Gogh, I'm at S 97, W 131, 72, Champions Drive. John's a breath of fresh air. And I think for those who have been through this once before or twice before, this has been kind of a very sensitive issue. When we met with John, Troy represented Stonebridge, I represented Champions Drive, and we both walked out of the meeting and said, this is a good deal for us. I think we've waited a long time to get to this point where it's a win-win situation for Champions Village, Stonebridge, City of Mesquite, and the developer, John. It utilizes that property extremely well, but keeps it under control, because the problem the last two times was the density issue, where it was a high-density classification. It would have been chaos, and property values would have gone down. It would have been a very poor decision. This is a good decision for the city of Mesquite. You have probably about 250 homeowners, and I believe that probably every one of them are on board with it. So, it's, again, it's refreshing. So, Stonebridge, Champions Village, I called Troy. Troy said to speak for him. Both our subdivisions are for this. There's one issue, and I'll, I'll just toss it out, I've talked to Eileen about it before. We're always concerned about the Trojan Horse. And the Trojan Horse is that cul-de-sac that's up on the west side of Stonebridge, when it meets the golf course parking lot. That's our, that, that was addressed by John by putting in the gates and having that as the emergency exit. It's the next step, and that is, after that development goes in, what would happen to the golf course? And if the golf course remains a golf course, or if it remains, or turns into a development? That's, that's the next step that we're concerned about, because that would create issues on traffic coming down Stonebridge Drive. So, that's, that's our only concern, was that cul-de-sac and what would happen if something else would happen beyond this development, and the golf course would get developed if it doesn't stay a golf course. Otherwise, we're totally for the development. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? Once, twice, declare this public meeting closed? Thank you. All right. Moving on, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes for May 26th and June 23rd. Approval of operator licenses. Resolution 58, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, NR 208. Compliance Maintenance Resolution for 2019. And Resolution 59, approval of letter of credit reduction for Will Rose Apartments LLC.
Move to approving gross?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing nulls in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to...
Rick, were we going to go to the cow at some point? I know we were trying to do the breakdown.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where we want to do that.
A logical spot. Got it.
All right. Let's jump to license approval. We'll take that first one, and then I'm going to adjourn and go to, well, actually, I'll take, is Mark still here?
No, he left.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take the, we'll jump to a license approval. First item on there is the approval of outside dance permit for AJ's Bar and Grill, August 1st, 15th, 22nd, 29th, 2020, from 6:00 PM till 10:30 PM. And amended license premise for those dates from 4:00 PM till 10:30 PM. So, I know we discussed a number of things earlier. First of all, let's get it on the floor. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. All right. Couple, number of items were discussed in finance that would be amending this. Before we do that, why don't we just get our discussion going? We can wrap this all up into, if this is something we're going to move forward with, we can wrap all those amendments into one motion for an amendment at that time. But, why don't we start? Does anyone want to start with this discussion and where we're at on this?
I'm just looking for the safety of the neighborhood. I mean, if, if anybody can come up with a good plan to let them have the first one and hopefully not have to, not have a lot of issues so that the next one can be, can move forward. I just don't want to approve all three of them and then have the neighbors call and say, "I can't believe you're going to force us to sit through this for two more weekends."
My concern is that unlike the approvals that we just did for other establishments, this is an event. This isn't just a casual, you know, let's have a band on a Saturday afternoon. These are major events, and I just don't think it's appropriately placed in the city. You've got a very large tent that holds a whole lot of people. And you can't really compare that to the tent that, you know, on Lanin Road, because that's just used for food. I've got a real difficult time with this. I, you know, I appreciate the efforts that, that the owner has made as far as trying to trim things down and trim things back a little bit. But this is an event, and it's not the right, the proper venue for an event such as this.
Anyone else?
Yeah. To me, it looks like a private festival, and festival events are, as Alder and Kubaki is saying, it's an event. It's some quite a bit larger. Our city festival in the past, it's three nights. I live well over a mile from it and can often hear the band at my house, festival. And that's not even facing my direction. So, I can understand a lot, a lot of concern over the noise. We do allow with the festival, and oftentimes, three, three nights here. Then we have National Night Out, which is an inconvenience for the immediate neighborhood around this Veterans Park and so forth. And then we've added the Beer Garden, or Gardens, I don't know which we have scheduled this year. Is there more than one event? Three. So, we've done a lot of that with city property. But when it's private property, it's a, maybe a whole different thing for us to consider. So, I just bring up that point. I guess that's the main things I wanted to say in, in regards to our discussion.
You know, typically, when you speak of events, though, they're over numerous nights in a row. This is several hours on one night, and the rest of the week off. So, I, you know, it's, it's a happening, but I don't know if you can call it a big event anymore, different than anything else. I understand everybody's concerns out there, but I do think AJ's has tried to do their best to take all concerns in place. And I don't think it's our job up here to pick winners and losers. They're both private parties. We have to come up with, I believe, a happy compromise on, on what can be done. I think what AJ's has proposed by putting up the snow fence and scaling back, cutting the time off, is reasonable. I do have concerns with people basically trespassing and, and, you know, going to where they shouldn't be going and the garbage laying around. That, that is my main concern, but I think if AJ's can, and...
Security. Is that a security?
Have the security to take care of that, and then be prudent and responsible and go out there and clean up right away after it. And then kind of, you know, let people after the event, have them move, move inside, or, you know, not...
Or disperse.
Or disperse, not hang around outside. I think, I think it's a reasonable compromise on it.
Anyone else?
I would only suggest on that, a large number of people, and if you've been around nights when the beer tent has been going here at the festival, police are right at hand. And there's been arrests while that's going on because of misbehavior of people that are partaking there. Here, the police wouldn't be immediately at hand and so forth. So, I still think it's a concern for the neighbors in, in a big way.
That could happen at anything, though. You know, any other place that we allow one of these functions to take place.
I want to just kind of applaud AJ. I know you're trying to do what you can do to put together a fundraiser, to be creative. My concern is that it sounds like the event maybe is a little bigger than your facility could potentially support, and some concerns with the number of vehicles. And we talked to the police department, are, is there a road concern? If you get 500, 400, 300 people down there, whether it's like a, a concern with occupancy on the, the land that's there? I would love to have seen, and when this first came up, love to have seen if, if the gun club would have worked with you to say, "Hey, this is a fundraiser. Use our land." Juxtapose this, move it around, let's work together on it. I don't know if it's too late to try and pull some like that off, because I think what you're doing is great. And my only hesitation, of all the hesitations coming in, I feel like you've addressed all of them, but the, the noise and the, the tent, and it is a concern. For me, with the numbers, I've worked sound at a concert before. I'm a tech guy, and so I know it can get loud. I think the timing does help. So, I, that's sort of where I'm at. I wish there was another venue somewhere where you could say, "Hey, let's pick it up and move it to a, you know, this plot of land somewhere, a field. A farmer has a field they'll donate, and you move it." That, for me, would have been a clincher to say, "Go ahead with it." I'm still struggling with the, the sheer number and the volume on both of those, so.
I think, I think he said he holds 300 and some people in there with the gun club, that there got to be over 100 people there. So, there, there could be 400 people in that area on any given night. So, if you're worried about 500...
Yeah, no, I, I mean, if, if he, do you have the okay to use that land at that? I mean... Yeah, no, I mean, if he, do you have the okay to use that land at that, I mean...
Well, now you're getting into different ownerships and liabilities and stuff, you know what I mean? And now it's short term to ask that of him now, you know, he's just trying to plan something, and then we delayed it weeks already, and he's already got bands in place, so he did have to cancel out, I mean, there's a lot of dilemmas involved here.
You know, I mean, if you get over...
And you missed, you made parking concessions as well.
What happens if you do have a huge run, and there's 600 cars coming in? Are you gonna block off the road and turn people away? Are people just gonna park down the road and just sort of stumble across? You know, I think a plan to say, "Hey, how are we gonna address the fact that there aren't concerts anywhere, and your concert junkies are gonna show up because they haven't been at a concert, and they're just gonna show up even if it means I'm gonna park in somebody's front yard, I don't care if I get a ticket?" Being able to address that, I think, would be helpful, too.
I think that Bob kinda hit it. We have nine, just on today, not even counting the past. If I counted six outdoor permits. AJ volunteered information, we're calling it an event because of his volunteering of information. Nobody else has volunteered information, we don't know what these other people are doing. They just have what's on the agenda. He could have did the exact same thing and not volunteered the information, and had the outdoor thing just like this. So, we're declaring it an event, but I think they're all events, they're all outdoor concerts. At least six of them, I count on just today's, if I counted right, six or seven, but... So, I think we're reading what he volunteered information, and we're getting our motions involved on the event issue of it. I can go on for other stuff, but I wanna hear anybody else have other stuff to say.
Eileen?
I think the biggest problem is it's the entire month of August. You're not asking his neighbors to listen to it one night. The other events that we approved, for the most part, were one night. Some of them didn't even have a band. And I know for a fact, 'cause I know most of those businesses, that they had spent a lot of time talking to their neighbors and got an agreement with them before they started. That's why nobody's sitting here complaining about those other ones.
You know, and that's a good point, how do we know that?
Because I know the business owners, and we've gone through it with them before.
But we don't know that, when it comes up here to count, we're depending on hearsay.
Well, one thing I can, one thing I can, and I don't wanna cut it off.
No, go ahead.
One thing I will add on these other, all these other ones we're talking about, there's a track record on these, you know, the Jamming on Janesville, maybe it's a new business doing it, but we've done Jamming on Janesville before, we know how that operates. Pioneer Inn has done these in the past.
And none of them have had problems in the past, because I believe there's some in question here.
That's what I'm getting at. We have a track record, so we're basing it off the track record. Unfortunately, I think what we're finding here is AJ's has a track record, too, with his neighbors, and it's, you know, it's not the relationship it probably could be. And I think that's the difference between the two right now.
And, you know, and that's the other point, and maybe we need more information when these come up, is where I was headed. Is there zoning violations, you know, is there police records? I mean, there's things that we should know about when we make these decisions.
Yeah, the parking is an issue, I'll tell you straight off. If this went through, if we're running this through Plan Commission, they would never approve it on the parking loan. There's, you know, you've got, even if you get permission from your neighbors, I don't, I'm not gonna speak for your neighbors, but they aren't thinking it through. Their liability of having people that were involved in, you know, an intoxicating event, and then going onto their property, parking cars and driving off, those are the things you lose houses over. You can't have enough insurance for that, unless you're indemnifying them, and if that's the case, you probably should do that. You know, the fear would be, you run one of these, and we can put that as part of our motion, that those agreements have to stay in place or they get canceled. But, you know, you have one of them, and else, and someone wakes up and realizes this is from a liability standpoint, just outright foolish to be doing. I mean, I'm not gonna let a bunch of strangers park in my backyard and assume that liability. You know, that very well could have, you know, somebody might say, "We're good with this," and then someone talks to them, you know, after the first event, like, "What are you doing?" And they cancel it, well, now the parking's gone. So, if, at the very least, if you do go forward with this, make sure that parking is part of the agreement that it has to stay on, or the future events get canceled. But, as is right now, Plan Commission wouldn't approve something like this for BSO.
Adam, what's the ratio of people to parking spaces for, like, a restaurant?
Can you come up to the microphone? It's based on square footage.
Oh, so it's not occupancy, like, "Hey, we can hold 200 people, you should have X amount of parking spaces." Sorry, I like pulled the end of this.
Yeah, no, no worries, I can look really quick. For retail, for sure, it's based upon square footage, it's not a capacity. Because we, as a city, really don't even know what their capacity is. It's something an architect usually determines, and we may never hear their occupancy. So, it is, it's either square footage, yeah, we don't even do seats for something like that. Auditoriums are based upon seats, like a concert venue where you'd have seating, that's based upon so many stalls per seat or something, but most stuff is square footage or customer area.
Is there, hey, if he's having 500 people, if you guys were looking at that, what would you say he should have parking?
I don't know off the top of my head, yeah, sorry. I can look to see, kind of, the code has different categories, and some things don't fall easily into one or the other, so you're kinda doing a hybrid approach. What we like to do at Plan Commission lately is, rather than just look at a stringent number in the code and say, like Sonny mentioned, average, how many people do you think you average a car? Two people a car, three people a car, one person a car? And just try to say from a practical, realistic standpoint. You have volunteers, you have the people that work there, you have the bands, you have the sound people, okay, that's parking, too, that you gotta think about, in addition to how many people you're averaging per car. So, there's no magical number. It's really, you just gotta kinda look at it from a practical standpoint and say, "Okay, what's the capacity?", and then divide by how many people could be in each car, and guess from there.
Well, thank you for...
Yeah, that's okay.
Further discussion? Anyone else?
Well, again, we'll go back to, he can handle 300 or 400 people in his building, and the parking's not an issue with having the business open. It's been granted to be open with the amount of parking that's there. So, again, because he's calling it an event, we're reading further into this than we are the other people. I'm trying to stay consistent, again, the word is consistency, on what we do for people. This one wanted to go to midnight, a lot of these are till 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. He's willing to stop at 8:00, he's willing to put up a snow fence, he's willing to put out security, his additional parking spots, he's asked for no parking signs, he's giving to charity. I mean, we know more about Adam's business than we do about any of these other businesses right now.
One thing I should add, when I did say that about parking, and obviously, I can't speak for Plan Commission, I don't think they, in a normal case, they would approve something like this for parking, and it's only because they're losing those spots that they typically need. However, this year, they have granted us waivers on that for bars and restaurants for tents. So, they are making exceptions for this year because of COVID.
That was my point, I didn't wanna get into that.
I should clarify that, if I'm saying that the Plan Commission is on board for exceptions because of COVID this year.
And I mentioned the COVID, too, that's part of the reason he needs to survive. I feel for the residents in the area, and I also feel for the business because of the downness of the business. It's tough to make a go of it, and if he's been around 12 years, I'd like to see him stay around longer and work with the residents, and see what they need in their area, you know, that they don't like or have concerns with or whatever. But, right now, we're on one subject, and that's, he's down, he's also cut it down from four events to three. So, there's been concessions going on, and that's what we gotta decide on, if we like the concessions or not.
So, on that moment...
I was gonna say, one other thing, your Planning Commission, that's why we're doing an outdoor dance permit and not a planning and zoning meeting. So, that's the planning, there was a lot of hoopla over what we're not doing.
Based on those concessions, if we are gonna move forward, if somebody, I would entertain any motions that would people, or amendments that people wanna make to this, and we'll have to amend, because right now, the motion is for his 6 until 10:30 and 4 until 10:30. So, if you want to, if somebody wants to make a motion to amend based on what he had all brought forward, and I can read that list off, too, if you're interested in what they were.
It was 4 to 8 on the three days, right?
The changing the times from 4 to 8, putting up a temporary snow fence along the, I believe it's the eastern end of the parking lot, or property line. Having temporary no parking, putting up in the neighborhood, security, private security on site, trash cans, staff picking up trash before or after the event, both on site and in the neighborhood. I think that covered it, did I miss anything?
Additional parking.
And the additional parking in writing from the neighbors granting that.
In writing.
Yeah, so...
And then one last date, the 22nd?
Correct, the 22nd would be removed from this. So, if somebody wants to make that amendment, feel free. If you don't, if you just wanna vote it up or down as is, you can, it's...
I'll make that amendment, and then we can go from there and make another amendment if you guys want, or vote on it, whatever you wanna do. So that everything's out, clear.
So, your motion for the amendment was for the items I read off, correct? Jill, do you have all those?
Yes, I do.
All right.
I'll second that.
You second, all right.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Alderman Hamel. Discussion on the motion to amend?
I'm sorry, I just can't support this, I just simply can't support this. It's the inappropriate place to put an event such as this. If the neighbors, well, assuming the neighbors will approve the parking, you've got about 190 parking spots for a minimum of 300, potentially 500 people. It's the wrong place, I'm sorry.
And just for point of reference, we're just discussing the amendment right now, we'll discuss and vote on...
Yeah, I just wanted to open up and re-...
Parking's part of the...
No, that's fine, I'm just, you know, just, you have another kick at this yet, so just...
He's just giving his opinion.
Just trying to get the amendment out of the way if we can. Any discussion, any more discussion on the motion to amend? All right, so this vote is just for the motion to amend, can you do a roll call on that?
Alder Person Madden?
No.
Kubaki?
No.
Engelhardt?
No.
Kapusta?
No.
Terrence?
Yes.
Hamel?
Yes.
Ann Wolfe?
Yes.
So, the motion to amend fails, correct?
Correct.
So, now we're back to the motion as brought on the floor. Any further discussion with that? Can't imagine there's a lot of...
So, you're talking about the one that's in front of us written?
Oh, sorry, what?
Just the way it was written, right?
Yes, the motion to vote on is as written, from the later times, the extra dates, everything. So, unless, unless there's another motion to amend, I'm going to call this for a roll call vote?
Well, we can, I suppose it doesn't matter, I mean, the time is the big difference here, which is amend the time to 8 o'clock. But I guess it would be the same vote, so it doesn't matter.
I have a point here, for AJ, I guess a question for AJ, too. Assuming this as written does not go through, some of these other permits were specifically just for outdoor extended hours to give you the ability to be under a tent. Is there some desire, I don't know if this is kind of an odd way to do this, to have it be just the ability to have your normal business without the concert side and a permit to be outdoors, extended beyond...
So, you can't really address the crowd without permission of the council, so...
I guess I'm wondering if that is something that we would be able to...
I think people like reacting to things that were brought forward and that's not been brought forward.
So, I guess I got a question, on that same line there, these outdoor dance permits that we have all in front of us, they have to tell you what they're gonna do outside?
They're extending their, well, if they're like a dance permit, yeah, they're gonna be dancing. If they're extending their premises, they would be drinking in those areas. But beyond that...
So, are any of these having music and not telling us, or, I mean, I'm just trying to...
What does that permit worth?
Again, I like to be consistent.
Well, the ones that say outside dance permit are planning to have music outside. And for some of the establishments, the Suburban Bourbon, for example, they do not have anything currently licensed outside. So, that's why for those outside events, he amends his premise to include the parking area for those specific dates.
So, he can add music in if he wants?
Well, if he applied for the outside dance permit, which would be identified on the agenda, you can't have music just without that application.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify.
Which needs to be approved by you.
How many of those are specific to Jamming on Janesville night?
All the ones for August 7th, so we've got Crush, Suburban Bourbon, let's see here...
Lucky's.
Lucky's, correct.
So, several of them are...
That's three out of the seven.
Yeah, pertaining only to Jamming.
So, like you have, for instance, Bay Bass Brew House, which is on the lake, and they're going till 11 o'clock at night, is there a music permit with that one?
It's a wedding, it's a dance, so there would be.
Right, correct, because it says outside dance permit.
As long as it says dance, they can have a...
So, we need to, well, I guess, yeah, don't, let's not get too far off the agenda. I understand where you're trying to tie this to me.
No, I'm just trying to stay consistent, I just wanna understand what's going on with all these, so I understand exactly what's going on.
I think that's the day they have to fire it.
We're being completely inconsistent, and we're picking winners and losers by doing this.
Yeah, but we do know something about these other ones. And there are some residential...
Wait, wait, one at a time, please. Yes.
We do know something about these other ones, I mean, it was said earlier that we didn't really know much about them, but we do, it's Jamming or other, and so we do know something about them.
And, I'll be honest, people showed up at this one, they're not showing up at the other ones. Right, wrong, or different, squeaky wheel. Alderman Wolfe?
I'm just reading here, outdoor dance permit for July 23rd, August 6th, and the 20th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And this bar, what is it, a former name of the bar, we had major discussions on this one. So, I'm not saying who it is or what, but we have history here, and we're looking to approve three dates of outdoor music.
If you wanna talk, but we're talking about this agenda, and when we get to that one...
I'm comparing it, we have, I have never had AJ's in front of me with violations for zoning or police, I've never, I've never had that brought up. If there was a history, I would be feeling different about it, is where I'm going with this.
Sure, and that's your right to vote how, which...
And so, my point is, there's consistency of three dates of another place that's gonna have outdoor music, three dates, he wants outdoor music. I see the tents bigger, the bands are bigger, but that's because he told us that. But the other places had a history, and he has no history.
Fair as we haven't approved those other ones yet.
I understand that, I understand that, but I'm just making comparison that we're in a residential neighborhood, and they're in, these other ones are in residential neighborhoods, they're gonna have music till 11 o'clock at night. He's asking till 8 o'clock at night. So, I just have a problem with the consistencies, I feel for the neighbors, I understand it, I probably wouldn't be happy myself, but at the same time, we can't pick and choose, as Bob said, winners and losers, I think that's absolutely, absolutely wrong. I think we have to give someone a chance to prove theirself, if it doesn't work, and there's major problems, then we say, "Never again, sorry, you had your shot, you screwed up", or, "God, this was a great thing for the neighborhood and whatever else, and you can do it again." I'm stuck on consistency, I hate to say it, but I've always been that way, and, you know...
Well, you could make a motion for just one of the dates with all those contingencies.
Well, I'm looking at other things that are happening, and it's not consistent. We'd have to go to the same thing with the other one, and tell them they can only have one date then as well. You know, you heard my, I put my approval through, I think three of us voted yes, four said no. I have no idea, other than someone of those fours that said no, they come up and come up with another solution to try to help a business out and help the neighbors out. And if the only way to do that is just say no, then I think we have a total loss on one side and a total win on the other, I'd like to see some kind of compromise and have both sides, you know, work as a neighborhood. I mean, I like to see the city work together, I didn't take this, I didn't run for office to butt everything. You know, I like to challenge stuff, you know, I get excited, emotional, I talk too much, but, you know, I stay consistent, you know, on my beliefs, so I'd really like to see the business have some shot here. I'd like to see someone that said no come up with an answer to help the guy out, and also give, let them prove the neighbors wrong, or let them prove them right, and then we can, we can move on from there.
Work with Boxer, that's a solution.
Well, that's a liability.
That's a solution.
You know, that's another business.
You asked for a solution, I just gave you.
But we deferred this for how many weeks, and now he's under a crunch. So, we put him in a bad spot to a point as well, so...
I could call the question.
Okay, I have one more thing.
Actually, the question's been called, we can vote on that. All those in favor of the question being called, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
If I have that right.
I thought we could work this out.
Question's been called, can you do a roll call vote?
On...
The motion as that's been brought to the floor, the unamended one, yes, that one.
Also, we're gonna vote now on the original one?
Yes.
Okay.
Alder Person's Madden?
No.
Kubaki?
No.
Engelhardt?
No.
Kapusta?
No.
Terrence?
Yes.
Hamel?
Yes.
Ann Wolfe?
Yes.
Fails.
Three in favor and four opposed.
Fails, three to four.
Okay, so what he can do now is reapply for one or two dates?
He can reapply for anything at this point. He could reapply for the same thing again if he wanted. You know, the likelihood of getting passed would be unlikely if it comes back with something identical, but.
I can't believe.
Our next council meeting is not until.
Twenty eighth.
Oh, no, 28th of July, yes.
I just can't believe we couldn't work out at least one date for the, for the business. I feel saddened on how we're treating the business owner separate from everybody else.
Thank you. I'm going to adjourn the council meeting at this point and jump into the cowl. We are reconvening the, the same, well, we just had a break, so.
Yep, okay.
Let's jump back to the common council. We are under. Yes, review of committee reports, finance committee from June 9th. Those are, do we accept those, or?
We did, we did the consent.
First, first reading of ordinance is impossible, second reading if rules are waived, ordinance number 1447, an ordinance to amend the zoning map, and 2020 comprehensive plan of the city in Meskigo, B-4, comma, RM-1, and PD-382PD, by Cornerstone Development. This is just the first reading, so we'll come back for a second reading. Any information that anyone needs for the second reading? If there is, just let us know. Going back to license approval, approval of the outside dance permit for Crush Wine Bar on Parkland Drive for August 7th, from 5:00 PM till 9:00 PM.
Move to approve.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion. I'm just going to mention the word consistency on every one of these when we go through it, because I feel bad that we couldn't even come up with a plan for the first, first dance permit. And we just totally shut them down. I think that was an awful mistake by the council.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously approval of outside dance permit with a temporary amendment to license premise for the Suburban Bourbon on Janesville Road for June 4th, 2021. June 5th previously was approved of 2021, from 4:00 PM till 10:00 PM, and August 7th, 2020, from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to use the word consistency again.
Any other comments? All's in favor, just a question, so what happens to that June 5th? Are we rescinding that, or is that the open then, or?
I'll amend his license to remove that and replace it with June 4th.
Okay, so does this motion really say that, or?
It doesn't say that.
So can I ask somebody to amend the motion here to remove the June 5th, 2021, that was previously approved? Otherwise we're approving, because we previously had approved June 5th, 2021.
Correct.
He's changing the date to June 4th, so if we just approve this as is right now, he's still going to have that June 5th, and we should remove that. So if somebody could make that a motion to amend, to just say to remove the June 5th.
Second.
Discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor of the motion, of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is amended, now all those in favor of the, the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think we have a record for amended motions tonight. Approval of outside dance permit for Mark's Pioneer on Pioneer Drive for July 18th, 2020, from 7:00 PM till 10:00 PM, July 25th, 2020, from 2:00 PM till 8:00 PM, August 9th, 2020, from 2:00 PM till 8:00 PM, August 22nd and 29th, my birthday, if anyone's taking notes, 2020, 3:00 PM till 10:00 PM.
Move to approve.
Begging on that one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Wait, he had, he had a motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it.
We got it.
So who was second? I'm sorry.
Eileen.
Eileen, okay, thank you.
I gotta mention that there's a lot of dates here, and we didn't allow someone else to do it, so I'm, gotta mention the word consistency again.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously approval of outside dance permit and temporary amendment to a license premise for Tailspin Bar and Grill on Martin Drive for July 23rd, 2020, August 6th and 20th, 2020, from 6:00 PM till 9:00 PM.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. There's more than one date here. I gotta mention the word consistency again.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, that was a place of contention in the past with when they've had lots of noise for the neighborhoods and so forth, but it's under different owners now, I understand.
And I guess I, I will comment on this one. This is an example of what a bar owner can do to help themselves, and I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying with this, Mr. Wolfe, but I am, I am saying this for anyone that's listening out there that owns an establishment. They started with when Andrew owned Lucky's, and Jennifer is doing more of the same. She's immersing herself into the neighborhood and community and communicating with people, and specifically like people across the street who had huge problems when it was a previous owner and previous bar is now a patron. And that's a win-win for everyone, and communication helps. It, it just, and hopefully every other bar owner out there either knows that, will learn from that, and use that as a model, so that's my editorial.
So this one has a chance to establish a new record.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously approval of Class B retail license and sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for Pops Marketplace LLC, DBA Pops Marketplace, on Janesville Road, no outside sales, Plan Commission approval required.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously approval of outside dance permit for Bass Bay Brew House on Audmar Drive from July 25th, 2020, from 7:00 PM till 11:00 PM.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Have to mention it's on the lake, it's till 11 o'clock at night, just say the word consistency again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously approval of change of agent, Justin Pancon, I can remember, Pat Conen, for Class A liquor license held by Ultra Mart Foods LLC, pick and save.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously approval of outside dance permit and temporary amendment to license premise for Lucky's at the Lodge on Janesville Road for August 7th, 2020, from 5:00 PM till, this one says midnight, so if you want to.
Motion to 11, right?
Well, we didn't, because we amended it before, doesn't it?
Yeah, we amended it.
You amended it on your recommendation, do you have to amend it here as well?
Yes.
So I would need another motion.
I thought we amended it and sent it up.
You did send it up, but that's only a recommendation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Move to amend.
So it needs to be amended again.
Move to amend.
To 11:00 PM.
But we need to put it on the floor, I think.
Yes, first I need someone to make that motion.
Oh, get it on the floor.
Yeah.
Move to put it on the floor.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, now I need a motion to amend.
Move to amend, to 11.
Second.
All's in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All those, any further discussion on the amended motion? All's in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
But I have a comment, you didn't ask us for comments.
I'm sorry, I thought I did.
I have to say that I think I've driven the point home. I won't, I won't do this at every meeting, but I am going to mention the word consistency again on this one, and I will hopefully not have to bring it up in the future, but I think that, again, we did an injustice tonight, that we didn't come up with any type of solution, that we should really dig deep in our hearts next time and help a business out and come up with some type of solution for them. When they're in front of us and make concessions, we should, we should respect that as much as we respect everything you hear from the neighborhoods as well.
Any other discussion? All right, voucher approval.
Nope, I got that, forgot that. Motion to approve utility vouchers, the amount of $115,411.08.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
We're dying out.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, no, no tax vouchers. Motion to approve general fund vouchers, the amount of $273,547.13.
Second.
You got the second? All right. Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
And motion to approve wire transfers, the amount of $371,077.91.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, city officials report there are none, communications miscellaneous business as authorized by law. Anyone have any communications, any updates from liaisons?
Yes, you got one, go ahead.
Little Meskigo Lake has been meeting by virtual, and is planning for next month, delaying their meeting date by one week.